Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena Administrative Meeting, January 5th, 2022, 4:00 P.M. This meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Administrative Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. We will be pa- please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your commentary during the meeting. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Joden.
Here.
City Manager Harlow Schulp.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Fever.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. Thank you. I want to first welcome our new Commissioners, Commissioner Reed and Commissioner Fever. Welcome to your first public administrative meeting. We hope this first meeting will be a positive experience. And I'm sure the others share my sentiments. Commission comments and questions?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't get to say welcome yesterday, but welcome to our two new Commissioners. I'm very excited to have both of you here. And from personal experience, I'll just say buckle up. I feel like the first even two years, almost going into three years now, it's still drinking from a fire hose. But very excited that you're here.
Any other comments? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'd just like to echo both of your comments, welcoming again. We had the opportunity to meet with them yesterday, but Commissioners Reed and Fever and look forward to working with them in the new year and you know, I think we've got another meeting tomorrow, so we're kind of hitting it, hitting the ground running, so to speak, but looking forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, discussions from the Commission? Okay, on our agenda, we have recommendations from Helena Citizens Council, but today we do not have updates from the Council, but rather we will have them at our next meeting. We now move on to the City Managers' Report. Manager Harlow Schulp.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. Welcome to your first admin meeting, everyone. The admin meetings are supposed to be more like a study opportunity and you all give us the direction, give me the direction on where to go next with items that are brought forward. Anything that's brought forward to you all is our opportunity to seek your direction. So as your representative, as part of the team, I bring all of that back and we implement. So today you'll have several items, you have two items, pretty mild first admin meeting. And the hopes that I shared to you, just high level, some high level updates. And typically I won't always have a written summary because I'm trying to make sure you're up to speed on things that might be going on that are moving quickly or that just need just a heads up, hey, this is happening. I'll also do that at Commission meetings because they're timely opportunities. And then the second, that's when we'll start, I usually start going into the actual presentation. So after I've done summarizing, I'll turn this over to John Campbell, our Fire Chief, who will do a presentation for you all and help in an update on the fire service study, which you should have a summary for in your packet and the agenda item itself. So while we're getting, he's getting ready for his presentation and just a couple of updates. This last budget cycle, we had approved, the Commission had approved a 2.2% increase for seasonal or for employees across, across the, across the board. Well, the seasonals were left out. So we're fixing that. There's no modification to the budget or an amendment that's needed. I just want to make sure that you know that that was left off of the original revisions. And the beginning in March, that 2.2% will be applied to all the seasonal positions. Also, we learned that the minimum wage went up. And when the minimum wage goes up, we have to, of course, validate that our wages are meeting the minimum. And we had actually three seasonal positions that were below the minimum wage. So I wanted to let you know the lowest one was $8.75 and the highest was $9.04. So the minimum wage has changed to $9.20. So just wanted to let you know that we've moved those positions up and now we'll do the 2.2% on top of those. I just want to make sure that you know that that had been the case and been sharing it out. Recreational marijuana, I know there's lots of conversations around recreational marijuana. And some context, I'm sure you're, you're wanting to get around recreational marijuana. After this meeting, I'll send over the most recent summary of the work we've been doing here and some of the code revisions that the teams are working on in response to the strategy that we put together. I just don't want you to be cut off guard if you have and receive questions as to what Helena is doing. And I can bring you, that'll bring you up to speed on recreational marijuana and where we're at. Thomas and the team have all been really overthinking it and which is what we always need to be doing and the fortunate or unfortunate thing in some cases is that I got to do this work in Colorado before getting here. So we legalized in recreational marijuana right away is back in Colorado. So get to lean on that. Now, second item, third item, excuse me, is our, I just want to let you know about the retreat. The Directors had a retreat and the Director Retreat, it's really a half a day over at Civic Center where we isolated ourselves and talked about what we liked and what we didn't like and set some direction for this year as a group. Wanted to let you know also that the Clerk of the Commission was invited and she participated as well. The priorities, just to give you an idea, as a, as a Director Team, we're going to be working on our work-life balance and stabilization of our staffing, surprise, just like every other employer. Those will be, that stabilizing our staffing will be a very large priority for us. There will also be future conversations around recruitment, succession planning, and then also retention strategies and we'll share those, I'll share those with you all as I get into those with them. But for this year, we really did have a good conversation about what went really well last year. And I was really happy to hear them say that our Director Team is stable. Now, on the outside, you might not think it's stable because we've had retirements and replacements, but what we've built is a team and stabilizing means that we see each other and are supporting each other. So that's, that was exciting and I'm glad to share that with you all. We're also using this work plan, which is really a nice place for all of us to understand who's doing what and how it aligns with that big picture and even with the budget. You'll get an update on that, by the way, coming in the next month orderly. We're going to be really focused on maintaining our community relationships. You all had the previous Commission and then when I've hired prioritized relationships as my number one priority in the community, want to make sure that you know that that is something that we're going to be continuing to maintain as a priority along with gaining more trust with the new Commission and our full Commission as a team that's competent with our expertise when we bring things forward to you, that we've contemplated it and are representing it in a way that you feel confident and have enough information for decisions. So that's, that's exciting. We're owning our roles and we're empowering our teams to do the work. So those are big picture, what we're planning to be working on this year. And I appreciate all the Directors, they've done an excellent job. And last, I'm going to just give a great shout out to our snow removal team as well, our water team. We've had several water breaks and doing that in minus and negative degree weather is pretty hard. So big thank you to our Utilities Team for fixing those water line breaks and making it happen as quickly as possible. And then the snow removal work has been fantastic. So thank you. I'm going to now turn it over to John Campbell unless you want to ask any questions of the Mayor and Commissioners.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. City Manager, thanks so much for that update. That was really helpful. And excited to hear some of the discussions around how to, well, I guess for us to really be continuously better employer. I'm wondering, you talked a little bit about the discussion of work-life balance. And I'm wondering, can you give us some examples as to how the city is going to improve work-life balance and make our roles more sustainable so we are holding on to not just leadership, but rank and file employees as well?
Yes. Today I had a conversation with Renee McMahon, who's our HR Director. She has completed and is putting together the summary data from our climate survey. As you know, we did a survey, a climate survey with our employees. That survey is going to help inform the types of activities that will not only support the employees and gaining new employees, but retaining them happily as best we can. There is a long tenure in our team and then we have a great deal of new employees, but each work group is different. So what's great about the information and we'll come back and share those with you. What's great about the information that has been garnered from, that we will completely bring forward by way of large movement and specific outcomes that we're after based on the data. That, bringing that information forward will help address what I think all of us really already know, which is we need more training. We need more, more competitive salaries. Better view on our benefits. Those are all things that are pretty typical. But they've been disconnected for a while and they're an opportunity for us to really reflect on, on some good feedback from, from our employees and then implement some strategies. So I'll have Renee work on those, of course.
Commissioner Dean, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Forgive me if this is outside the scope. It is, it is the first meeting. I may be asking a question that, that is not relevant, but I'm wondering if discussions about remote work have factored into the work-life balance discussion that you're talking about or into discussions at all during the retreat and whether or not that is part of what is being analyzed right now. Thank you.
Sure. The work-life balance and working from home, each department, big picture, each department director is empowered to work with their teams and identify the best structure to ensure that the work is done. Now that could be from home. There's the work-life balance is Thomas and myself and anybody who knows if they're working from home, I'm sure. I know Commissioner Reed, you do too, that there's the opportunity for overdoing it. And there's also the opportunity for underdoing it. So on the outcome side of work-life balance and making the flexibility available, the question on whether or not that has had an influence on the balance is something that we're it's not common for so many of our positions that they're actually using remote work. We had so, so many of our employees who actually could not do that. We had, as you know, the utilities, streets, so forth. Those, those positions aren't positions that can remote work. So we're talking about a pretty narrow wedge. And as far as the work-life balance, the recruitment retention strategies, those are more around boundaries. And so to your point, yeah, work-life balance includes, are you working from home? But also are you setting boundaries? And we as a team have not communicated what boundaries look like. And we also haven't talked about the reality of overworking ourselves. So I think there's a lot of people who do that because of the pandemic, because of low staffing, because of a variety of things. So we really are, even ourselves at the top, guilty of doing things as well. So that is a conversation that is just beginning. I look forward to sharing what I learned too from them on what they think will help support work-life balance.
Thank you. Chief Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. I've been the chief for almost a month. So I wrote down some thoughts here to make sure that I've got succinct communication with you on this issue. On February 7th, 2021, the City Commission was presented with the next steps in revising the 2006 and 2008 Fire Service Studies. During that meeting, the Commission identified a number of stakeholders to include in this process. That list should be included in your packets. Fire Department staff took this list and researched points of contact for each entity. Emergency Services Consulting International has been contracted to revise these studies into a master plan document for the City of Helena Fire Department. Over the summer and fall of 2021, Helena Fire Department staff provided data and information to ESCI regarding areas area characteristics, planning, finance, physical resources, human resources, training, certification, mutual aid, insurance ratings, as well as GIS and mapping information. In October of 2021, ESCI came to Helena to complete their onsite assessment and review process. The next steps in this master plan development are for ESCI to conduct two stakeholder meetings. Stakeholder meetings with Fire Department leadership and ESCI consultants are scheduled for Wednesday, January 26th and 27th at 6:00 P.M. downstairs in the Chamber of Commerce Building. The ESCI consultants have a survey instrument that they will utilize during these meetings. So the important feedback from the community groups will impact the master plan recommendations. Once completed, the master plan will be presented by ESCI at a future administrative meeting. My request for this meeting is that the Commission review the stakeholder list and provide any additional suggestions to ensure sufficient engagement for the ongoing master plan project. Additionally, I'd like to share a recently published peer-reviewed article from the Fire Service Journal of Leadership and Management entitled "Effects of Crew Size on Firefighter Health and Safety." This article and others like it may assist the Commission in beginning to contextualize the type and nature of some of the recommendations that will ultimately be presented in the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
I did have one question. This is not necessarily feedback on the stakeholder list, but more, I guess, a general question. And I think that Commissioner Logan could probably speak to it better than I could. But I'm, I know one of the things that we've been talking about basically over the last year and a half is how efficient and I guess direct are our services across emergency services? And so I'm wondering, will this study discuss or look at how we can more efficiently and effectively address issues and constituent needs in terms of emergency services and how the Fire Department plays into all of that? I'm thinking particularly like, like calls for service from the 911 Dispatch Center, et cetera.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Commissioner Dean. In broad strokes, a master plan profiles the current fire protection and emergency services system. It includes capabilities and limitations of the system and identifies the nature and extent of the risks faced by citizens, their property, citizens and their property and the environment. So there will be a wealth of information relative to the experiences and volume that the Fire Department is encountering in the community, as well as a number of recommendations about how we can improve services and what the trigger points are for expanded service provision.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fever?
Well, let me be just a little bit more direct, John. I really like Commissioner Dean's question. We're going to be considering how we spend ARPA money on how we might direct our attention to serving folks who are in mental distress as opposed to police protective stress. And I'm wondering if, as you guys work through your own strategic plan going forward, if how we all, both Police Department, the Fire Department, the independent entities, NGOs that are out there that, well, the nonprofits such as Seapet's are addressing or might address collaboratively through dispatch how we deal with folks who are under mental distress?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Commissioner Fever. I don't know that that is within the scope of the master plan. There is information there that we have not yet seen because it hasn't been shared with us. It is not yet complete. But certainly the areas of, we'll call it risk, but areas where the community is in need are definitely included in the master plan. But at this moment, I can't speak to what the specific recommendations are going to be around the issues of mental health and, and those citizens in our community experiencing homelessness.
Thank you, Chief John. I, you know, my, my notion is that there is a community need that we address mental issues as well as law enforcement and maybe even fire as well. And as we go about spending money, I think the primary departments that deliver direct services to people who need, whether it be for fire or for police or for mental health, are talking to each other as they go forward in the plans that they might develop. Now, I obviously didn't expect you to answer that question with a detail, so don't think that I'm trying to drill you on this. I'm just trying to grope. I'm just trying to get my arms around what the expectations that our community has and how we might address them. It's really that broad. So don't take it from me as a direction. It's just something that I hope that you're able to look at because I think inevitably you will fall upon it no matter what.
Thank you, Commissioner.
If I can ask a question around response to maybe crosswalk the data that may be researched as part of this between Commissioner Fever's request and Chief Campbell's research, the ambulance calls and responses of by ambulance would include those mental health response activities that were so to your point, Commissioner Fever, there, we may actually run across it without knowing outwardly in the data. To John's point, he won't necessarily have all that information, but it's a great flag for us to keep an eye on as we get more into that information.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying there. I, I don't want us to spend money on what we're already doing. I don't want folks jumping into somebody else's lane and doing that too. And so as long as we are efficient in how we go about our, our public expenditures, but we're doing it with a common purpose, that would be my, my agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Commissioner Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So let's see. I remember what my question was. So relative to stakeholder engagement, the list seems really good and representative of the community and you're going to be getting input from those stakeholders. One of the questions, I'm gonna scroll down here a little bit, was it looked like almost surveys in the packet, page 12 of the packet refers to a customer-citizen input. How do you go about that? Engaging that or getting that input from, from the customer or the citizen?
The stakeholder list is representative of the community at large. And I believe that is the intent is they are engaged in the community within their own circles and then also are reflective of the community so that they can respond to the survey instrument and provide that information. Is that what you're, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Logan, is that the nature of your question?
I, I think so. So, so you've got a list of, it looks like, let's say a dozen stakeholders that seem more organizational than they do individual in the memo that is in the packet. Further down there, there's a like a page that is designed to get customer, it says customer slash citizen input. So maybe from individuals rather than organizations and, and you know, if that's the case, if you're seeking that input from people, the public, how do you go, how is ESCI gonna go about, you know, getting that, that input? Or is that something the department will do? Or I guess that's more the nature of my question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Logan. That citizen engagement or the, the title of that document is reflective of what ESCI's scope and work includes. So they are responsible for coming and conducting these stakeholder meetings and that instrument is how they pull data from those meetings and then use that data to have impact on the final master plan itself. So the way I understand these meetings will go is there will be a brief presentation by me at the beginning about the Fire Department in general. And then ESCI consultants step in utilizing this survey instrument to garner the data from the stakeholders who are present.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Do we have any other questions? If not, Madam, Manager Holoschalk, you have the floor.
Thank you. It sounds like we're good to go, Chief Campbell. Thank you. I know also there were a couple of individuals who were on the call in case there were questions contractors. So thank you for making them available today too. The next item on the agenda is the update on ARPA. I just wanted to circle around, given this is the first admin meeting and we just in the previous admin meeting had a conversation with the previous city commissioners who were on. I wanted to make sure and circle back around to our new commissioners as well as this commission. And again, these are not decision-making meetings. These are direction-related meetings. The actual implementation as described is in the memo on next steps. And to you all, wanted to first confirm the direction as described and then so that's just kind of arrive at consensus and confirm the next steps regarding these dollars. And then also if there are any revisions or additions that you would like to make to do so. Now, yesterday, I know we talked about the education outreach program, the vaccination program. I, Mayor, I was, I have left a message for Drenda and was not able to, she didn't, I haven't heard back from her around whether or not she needs more money beyond the $75,000. But I suppose it's an opportunity to talk through if she doesn't need it or she does. But at this point, I don't have an answer from her directly, but the county commissioner said that she had shared to them that it was not something that she needed additional funding for. So apologize I couldn't catch her today, but do my best.
Is that your update, Madam?
That is my update.
What's that?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any public comments? Adam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I see no hands raised online and I have no written public comment on this item.
City Clerk update.
Okay, on that note, hi. I would like you, Mr. Mayor, it should be in your packet, if you would announce the board appointment recommendations you have. You have given me and the Deputy City Clerk for discussion tonight. As you may or may not know, for the newly elected commissioners, we give you all the opportunity to review the applications for the city boards and committees at the admin meeting. This is your opportunity to discuss or ask questions if you need, need to. And then you take a formal vote at the following regular commission meeting. These are the mayor's appointments that he's recommending to you all. So you should have received those in the packet. The memo should be there for the mayor to read aloud for the public's interest. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yes, I am recommending the following board appointments. City Commission Committees, Boards and Committees Assigned for the Mayor and Commissioners. With me, with the mayor, Will McCollins, I am recommending the Helena Public Arts Committee, the City County Board of Health, and the Civic Center Steering Committee. Commissioner Emily Dane is recommending the Mayor Pro Temp, Business Improvement District, the Audit Committee, Transportation Compliance Committee, ITNS Board. Commissioner Sean Logan, the Audit Committee, Chamber of Commerce, Behavioral Health, Local Advisory Committee, City County Parks Board. Commissioner Eric Fever, Board of Adjustment, Montana Business Assistance Connection, Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Committee. Commissioner Melinda Reed, the ADA Compliance Committee, Audit Committee, Transportation Coordinating Committee. Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board. I'm recommending the appointment of Riley Henson to a first term on the Affordable Housing Trust Advisory Board as a committee member with direct experience in housing insecurity. Term will begin upon appointment and expires January 31, 2024. Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board, appointment of Chris Hunter to a first term on the Affordable Housing Trust Board as board, advisory board as a citizen at large. Term will begin upon appointment and expires January 31, 2023. Appointment of Michael Need to a first term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as a member of the nonprofit housing sector. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on January 31, 2024. Appointment of John Roush to a first term on the Affordable Housing Trust Board as a member for the real estate sector. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on January 31, 2024. Appointment of Richard Ballwever to a first term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as a member with a background in engineering or architecture. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on January 31, 2023. Appointment of Byron Bailey to a first term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as a member from the field of banking and financing and finance. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on January 31, 2024. Appointment of Stephanie Bowe to a first term on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board as a member from the field of banking and finance. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on January 31, 2023. Helena Citizen Conservation Board, interim appointment, Patrick Judge to the Helena Citizen Conservation Board as a representative of environmental organization. Term will begin upon, on appointment and expires January 29, 2023. Solid Ways Steering Committee, appointment of Tyler Emmerich to a first term on the Solid Ways Steering Committee as a resident representative. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on January 31, 2024. Interim appointees can reapply for full terms following the completion of the interim appointments. Man, I see hands raising up like crazy. Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a process question. So we'll be, I think if I remember, I looked at Monday's agenda, we'll be taking these up for formal approval?
Yes.
Okay. And, and I just want to comment that I'm totally comfortable with the assignments that you've given on, in this memo, you know, from my perspective, certainly if, you know, any of the other commissioners wanted to barter or negotiate or anything like that, I, that's something we can do, but I'm, I'm not wedded to them, I'll say, but, but certainly do enjoy each of these boards that I've participated on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Fever.
I must have not got the memo regarding all those appointees. And so it's my error if but it didn't come in on my, I just looked on my machine here and certainly not in the agenda that was for today. Not a big deal. But I assume if it's in the Monday's agenda, I should have just looked there. Was that the idea? I should just look ahead? Just tell me, off dudes, tell me, I should look ahead?
That's it.
Actually, actually, Mr. Mayor, if I might jump in, at least on the, the version of today's agenda that I have, it is on pages, pages 95 and 96
Thanks.
of today's, today's agenda. So
Well, I stopped one page too short at 93. I showed 94. I love the term packet. I mean, packet is a screen, but that's okay. I'll live with this, this zooming agenda mania of ours and until we can correct it somehow or another, hopefully. Anyway, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate very much your work in this regard. I'm sure all these appointments that you would make are, are appropriate. I may want to bargain with Sean about how we might go forward on a couple of these things, though. You'll be, you'll be okay with that, right?
You can talk that offline.
Is that, is that a, I mean, if, let's say, Commissioner Fever were interested, is that something that we could do before Monday? Or are we pretty well set in, in the
No, we're not. We're not set. You can discuss it with him. He can discuss it with you. And if you see the need, just give me a holler. We will make the adjustment.
Right. Thanks.
Manager Holoschalk.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out, actually ask a question. Perhaps the, the Solid Ways Steering Committee is not actually a city commission board. So it's a representation, as I understand it, onto a city operational steering committee. And we wanted to make sure that the commission was aware of, but it's not a, an official city commission board. So I just wanted to clarify if I could how I, I'm not sure you actually have to have a formal approval. That was, that was just my, my question. I hoping to hear more. I don't see these before they get there, so I just want to understand.
Understand what, Madam, Manager Holoschalk?
Why we're doing an appointment for a committee that's not a board or a city commission board or commission.
We have that as a committee and we will continue to have that as a committee. And so
I'm sorry, man. It's an operational steering committee. It's not a, it's not a board of the commission.
So what are you seeing, Manager Holoschalk?
I don't know why this is on here. Why are you
There, because we have the committee and we will continue to have that committee to guide the Civic Center.
The Solid Ways Steering Committee, sir. Mayor.
The Solid Ways Steering Committee.
Mr. Mayor, if I might jump in.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I know, I know that this is, well, I think that this is part of the discussion of why we have been, and I know this is going to be new to the new commissioners. Except for some of the meetings that I think you've all been listening to, one of the things that has been on our agenda is updating the Advisory Board bylaws and what constitutes, you know, these different committees or advisory boards or, you know, what's a steering committee and what has a sunset date, et cetera. That Solid Ways Steering Committee, I know, is something that has come out of the master plan process. I think that it probably is prudent for us to keep it at like to include them on these type of appointments because it is a city resident representative. I think it's important that the, you know, we have a discussion or a consideration in a public meeting of those folks and also, you know, kind of a clear process for people to apply for any type of steering committee. So I, I mean, I'd just say, I understand that it's not, you know, in ordinance or they adopt it through resolution right now, but I do think it's more than appropriate to include it in our appointments. Similar to how, you know, we did with the Civic Center Steering Committee. I mean, WHLMAC isn't even technically yet in ordinance, which has been an ongoing discussion of, you know, let's get something streamlined and some processes in place. And I know this is something that has very much been on the city clerk's agenda as well. And, and the city attorneys. And so I just think that I don't think there's any reason why we need to take it off of these type of appointments. I think it is appropriate here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Manager Holoschalk, I apologize. I thought you were referring to the Civic Center Steering Committee. My apology there.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I, I absolutely agree. We want to make sure that the commission is consulted on the, especially when we operationally are utilizing citizens to provide the input before
to provide it before we get in front of the commission. I just want to make sure that we know that this isn't actually a full commission.
Do we have any other comments or questions on this topic? Are there any public comments? Manager, I mean, Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I see no raised hands on this topic, and I have no written public comment.
Okay, moving along, department feedback. What is this topic here? Department direction and feedback. I'm assuming is the same as topic ten.
This item, sorry, Mayor, if I may, this this item is bereft of topic ideas. This is the area normally where there would be a presentation by a department on an item needing feedback, and at this time, we do not have anything a further requesting further feedback.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Reed? You're on mute, Commissioner.
Yes, I sure am, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My apologies. And and perhaps we get to this later, but I was just hoping for a bit of clarity on what the next step is regarding the ARPA funding discussion. I know we had an update, but what is the next step with that? Manager Harwo Shok.
I think that next step will come in our next meeting, but I'll give the meeting, I mean, the answer to Manager Holoshok.
Great, thank you. So I was asking for direction earlier, but I've I figured we'd kind of come back to it at the end under the commission discussion and direction manager. So at this point, thank you for the question. And at this point, we are taking the direction as noted from the last commission meeting, and I shared it in the memo, and the next steps are further in, so. Just a big long summary of what we've done so far is in that memo, the next steps are just implementation phases. So there are adoption and amendments of the current budget. What we did at adoption of the FY twenty two budget was basically incorporate the revenue, but we didn't dedicate the expense. So what we'll be coming back with are the presentations themselves of the individual projects. There were four okay to move forward into the first budget assignment, and then there are additional ones that will go through the second budget assignment and budget amendment process. Those ones are the misdemeanor, excuse me, the DUI Corps, the Kahoots Program, and Friendship Center. So those will come through a second. No matter what, all of them will have an update to all of you at a commission meeting where a formal decision will be made. So to date, these have only been consensus based direction that we're going to be implementing. So the the question that I had posed today was whether or not there were any changes or modifications or clarifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Holoshok. Commissioner Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My my question was along the lines of we the previous commission had the opportunity to sort of weigh in on on these potential projects and programs. I think on the, I think the date was the fifteenth of December. I guess, and and I think we all at the time made our our interests known, but you know, certainly with Commissioners Reed and Fever. Will they have the opportunity? Let's say they like one aspect and don't like another. Do they get, when do they get to weigh in? I guess it's kind of what I'm wondering.
Well, I I don't see a problem with them weighing in because I think they can if they have any heartburn about the 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 process we've taken or the avenue we're taking, they can certainly, excuse me, they can certainly weigh in now or weigh in our next meeting or weigh into the city manager, and she will inform us about their 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 ideas. Manager Holoshok?
Great. So this would be the opportunity to talk over any items that may have been okay to move forward through that first budget allocation. Any modifications, any concerns? Also, this is also the opportunity for the commissioners, and they can always absolutely add in new ideas. I need to clarify one point. The revenue that we received that was adopted into the FY twenty two budget was half of the total that we anticipate receiving by way of revenue because we split our fiscal year. It's not calendar year. The dollars, the second allocation, which is the other half will come to us in the spring. So we'll have to do both the incorporation of the revenue plus the new amendments related to those projects. So tonight would be the good time to make any concerns known around the projects that have been brought forward. Also, modifications, additions. And then knowing that no matter what, they're not final decisions. Final decisions actually happen at the commission meeting in an amendment of the budget yet to come, which will be assigned.
Commissioner Dean?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So a couple things, I know in part of this discussion, I would, a big chunk of this, almost half, we have been talking about using for housing, which I would include like the continuum of housing, emergency transitional and more permanent housing. The emergency housing piece, I know is still very much in, from what I understand, kind of planning phases. And so I think, you know, before we I'm supportive of it, but I think that we really need to get some much more firm idea of what we are actually looking at. The other piece, what I would consider like the more transitional and permanent housing out at our Redeemers Lutheran Church. I think what would be, I think, not just for the commission, but for the community as a whole, and I think we've heard this. Just, you just want to know from some of the comments that we've gotten, that people understand that housing is an issue and we need to find some solutions. I think it might be worthwhile to ask the organizations that are included in that project to maybe present to the commission. Or it doesn't even have to necessarily be an admin meeting. We could do like a, you know, work study or community gathering of some sort. I know one of the things I am interested in finding out is, I mean, this is a huge project, like an almost thirty million dollar project of which we would just be, you know, a small piece of. But I also want to know, you know, what is going to be the lack of a term return on investment for the community by, you know, putting a substantial amount of our ARPA dollars into this, as well as, you know, are the other funds already secured? How do they plan about going to get them secured? What kind of timeline are we looking at? I know that they have thought through a lot of this, but I don't think we've necessarily had an opportunity to present that to the community, because I want us to have some like pretty significant community buy-in before making, you know, substantial contributions to what I think is going to be an excellent project. But I want to make sure we're doing our due diligence on the front end, so it can be successful in the long term. So that's what I would add with that piece. The other thing, too, I am not necessarily opposed to holding off on waiting to finalize the allocations for the half that we have, we won't get until the spring. You know, we just had a new variant that it appears will peak quickly. Everything in Montana comes seems to come late. But I also don't want to put us in a position where we don't get any more federal dollars, and, you know, we have a a significant spike or emergency in the summer, and we have nothing to fall back on. So I think that might just be something to keep at the front of our minds as we are allocating these dollars. Considering we haven't gotten half of them in our, you know, bank account yet. So that's where I am, and just a few ideas.
Thank you. Commissioner Fever?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. I appreciate what Commissioner Dean just said. I I haven't even visited with her, so it's just great that we have, I think, some thoughts that are pretty much along the same line. I just need more detail about the homeless emergency shelter stuff. I mean, there's just not enough detail that I've looked at that gives me confidence that three million dollars allocated to that at any point in time would be appropriate. It might be down the road, but it isn't right now. I like the Redeemers Church proposal. I would like to hear from the groups that are interested there. I know Habitat Humanity has lots already in its mind. I think Y W C A has some transitional lots or housing in its mind. I I think Commissioner Dean has the right idea. I'd like to hear from Habitat Humanity and from Y W S A C A exactly how they would go about doing that, and if there's other parties that are ready to build. But when I start talking about housing, I, you know, I'm cognizant of the fact that the previous commission developed the housing affordable, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I'd like to see how that interfaces with all of this ARPA money. Because I think we have a fairly substantial amount of dollars available to grow housing opportunities in in Helena, not just at our redeemers. I, you know, I'm very interested in how we could, if you will, provoke more renovation of properties that right now are largely run down, if not even abandoned, that could be indeed developed into something appropriate for folks to live in. And so I think those are issues that I think beg us to take a little bit of time to really drill down. But I want to say that I'm pleased with the previous commission's, you know, priorities. I I don't want to deviate from them enormously. I just want more specificity when it comes to how we go about doing business. I'll just finally add, it's interesting to me, if you look at what folks have offered online to the city in terms of how we might spend ARPA money and previous, if you will, input that we've received from citizens. The Centennial Trail isn't even in this list. And yet there are more individual comments about doing something positive about the Centennial Trail from pavement to Henderson Bridge and beyond than anything else. And so, you know, if we start looking at maybe smaller amounts of dollars that might be expended, Centennial Trail is a part of that. And then finally, even though it may be in a second tier of sorts, and maybe something to be done later on, the Kahoots Project, which I I I think I I like the way that that looks from what Eugene Oregon did, but if we're already doing something like that in some fashion with St. Pete's Hospital, or we already have our EMTs from the fire department already responding to things that are not police action, but our mental health, if we're already doing things, I'd certainly want to see that that activity is coordinated so that we don't create an entirely new project over here that actually could just be what we're already doing, and we could just build upon it. So those are the comments that I make tonight, and maybe shoot, I don't want to just blabber on about it, but I don't know that we're in a rush to decide even Monday about how we would go about spending these dollars. So thank you.
Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not much to add. I think it has been well articulated, but I would agree that the initial first wave or first tier priorities, particularly housing, I support that as a priority. I agree, we do need more information. So I think if I heard correctly from Manager Harloshock, there would be presentations of these things moving forward, and I think if if we have robust presentations with sufficient detail, that will allow us to move forward. And with regard to the second tier or ones that did not have consensus, I would say a similar strategy would work. A bit more information allowing us to determine whether or not those those would be funding opportunities would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Manager Holoshok? You on mute? You on mute?
I pushed the button for the hand. I'm sorry. The Centennial Trail, I just wanted to circle back. I should have pointed out in comments, the trail is not eligible. That's why it's not on the list. So I just want to make sure and share, and anything transportation related also is not eligible. Thank you.
Commissioner Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to be too long-winded, but I think I've made my position fairly clear, whether in meeting or in other media, but I do want to really advocate for spending the bulk, if not all of its funding on our water and sewer infrastructure. I think it's been, you know, clearly demonstrated that there's forty million in need. Really thirteen million dollars in realistic capacity that to be able to accomplish these projects, and these are one-time funds. I think they'd be a great use to address the many decades of deferred maintenance to our water and sewer. These are existing commitments and obligations that we've made all Helenans in this spring. We had a study of our aging water system that was presented to us, and it determined that nearly forty percent of our pipes are fifty years old. And that fifteen percent were more than seventy-five years old. Thirty-four percent of the system is undersized, which causes very high pressures and impedes adequate fire flow. Was also noted that there are sixteen miles of pipe in our downtown and on our west side that were at high to extreme risk for failure, and another sixty-seven miles in the grid were listed at a medium risk. We all know the stress that our grid went through this summer, and that weakness has got it going, not going away. There are multiple agencies and organizations. And we're granted part part of that that group can assist those who are struggling with homelessness and housing and other social challenges, but there's no one else who can take care of our obligation to provide clean water and wastewater to all Helenans. On us. And as to the proposed pilot programs, and each of them, I think there are conceptually some great ideas. But as I look to each of them, there's not a clear plan for what we're spending these funds on. Neither is there a sustainable funding source once this money is exhausted. When money runs out, it's my belief that we will need to either cut existing services and commitments that we've made to our community, or we'll need to go to the voters to continue to fund them as is required by our by our by state law and by charter. Meanwhile, the pipes continue to age. I was kind of chided at our last meeting when I didn't advocate for spending the funding on on programs that addressed homelessness and affordable housing and mental health issues. The idea with I guess the chiding was that, you know, we're talking about real human beings here kind of thing. But I can think of no more essential no more human need than water and wastewater services that Helena can provide. Water for just everyday living and for protection from fire and removal of wastewater from our homes. I also think that by, there's opportunity that by making these investments in our critical infrastructure now will likely have cost savings in future budgets that might enable us to sustainably fund these projects. After staff has had more time to fully vet carefully plan them so that we all know what we're spending our money on. So I just wanted to reiterate my position, so it's that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Logan. Commissioner Dean?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have Commissioner Logan's comments brought up a couple of questions for me, and then I do have a separate question on 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 this, but so, and I don't know if Ryan is on or not. Oh, he is, okay. So the way that I understood at our last meeting with the 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 state dollars that we got, not our ARPA dollars, but the separate state dollars for water and wastewater, we got we ended up getting a total of what I think is eleven point four million dollars. And then you're asking for the additional one point eight million for that local share of it, which is results in that thirteen million that we have the capacity to achieve. Is that accurate?
Mayor Commissioner, it is, uh, close, but not quite, is that we have a grant, uh, for the direct allocation is 5.5 million plus the 2 million in the competitive grant. So the grants that we actually got are 7.5. We need to come up with a little over 2 million to match the 5.5 to come up to basically $8 million. And then we need to have, um, 2 million to match the 2 million in the competitive one. So that's four, so it comes up to, uh, the 11.5. And then to get to the 13 million, which is basically our, um, max capacity, we can come up. It's, it's rough, it's an estimate, is we're asking for the 1.8 million to be able to help with the crosstown connector so, uh, that we can do that. So we are putting all of the money out there, so it'll be $13 million actually on the grand, ground and not use the 1.8 as match, but actually get product, um, out on the ground and get construction.
So just to simplify, if, in what we have today in our packet, that 1.8 is what you would need out of our ARPA dollars to complete that 13 million in capacity? Is that correct? Okay, okay, cool. Um, my other question, and that's, I, I guess in response to that, I very much, I mean, we are, we hear from folks all the time and there was the report this last year. Obviously, we have a lot of need and if we could support, you know, more, more building capacity, I would be in favor of that, but, uh, you know, we only have so much time to 2004, I think, to spend, well, 2026, is that 2026, to get these projects underway, um, or bid? And so I think that that's, um, you know, I don't want to bite off more than, you know, contractors here can handle either. And then we end up having a bunch of money that we can't do anything with, um, and don't have plans to spend. Um, my follow-up question, um, and I think this is probably for the city manager when we have our, our next discussion. And I mentioned this at our last meeting. I know that we are not, uh, like, we are not a city size that has the same type of, um, evaluation, um, impact evaluation requirements as other larger cities do under ARPA. Um, but I would like to see some sort of, even if it's a modified structure, I would like us to have some sort of, um, tool to evaluate the impact, um, of these dollars. Um, I think one thing that we as a city sometimes, one of the things we could improve upon is actually communicating our successes and communicating the impact of what we're doing. Um, and I, having a tool to actually, um, communicate that type of impact and measure that impact with these dollars, I think would be hugely beneficial. And also, you know, a really good opportunity to learn from our actions five, 10, 15 years down the line. Um, so if we could get some sort of, um, you know, tool or, or thoughts around how we can better evaluate that impact, um, as we start allocating these dollars, I think that would be, um, great.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just briefly, um, I appreciate the clarification Commissioner Dean just, uh, brought forward with regard to the, the funding for, uh, infrastructure. Um, and thank you Director Leland for that information. Um, I think going forward, um, and in response to Commissioner Logan's comments, I also believe, uh, water and wastewater infrastructure is critical. Um, and I, I did not understand this to be an either or discussion, but I think as we move forward with, um, presentations and decision points on ARPA funding, it will be really useful, um, where we are able to see the big picture of if this, if we fund this project, then we do not have funding for these other projects so that we're aware of when we are doing an either or decision, uh, versus talking about projects that sound good, but we can't really do them all. Um, and, and that may be extremely obvious, but I know that sometimes budget discussions are so complex that it can be easy to miss the moment where you are deciding between things and unable to fund all of the priorities you have before you. So again, I appreciate the clarifications and I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Logan. Um, and I am hopeful that we are able to move forward with priorities that include both, uh, critical water infrastructure and housing as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dean, is that okay? Commissioner Reed, okay, you want to put your hand down if you're done? Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I see no hands raised at this time and I have no written public comment in the Q and A.
Thank you, Ma- Madam, uh, Clerk. Commission discussion and direction to the city manager. Manager Holoschok?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to summarize, we will continue forward with the stakeholder engagement list of, um, that was presented by Sheik Campbell. We'll move forward with the direction identified in the ARPA conversation to date, noting also that the presentations are very important. Also, um, contemplating ideas on how to improve the, uh, education out into the community on the My Redeemers. There's been a lot of investment in that project already and it has received several grants from the city, including, uh, CDBG. So it's very exciting and, uh, happy to help communicate that out. The, uh, last is just making sure to, um, look at metrics on the outcome side for the ARPA dollars. Thank you.
If you said it, I may have missed it, but did you get the part about presentations from those stakeholders?
Um, yes, including that as part of that My Redeemers. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any final comments from the commission? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.